Let's just do, let's vote on that, Victoria. Perfect. And Chris votes aye.
Aye.
Well, you're voting, I'm sorry, I assumed you were voting aye. Jumping on there.
Okay, unanimous, and I have Alex not present at vote, so just let me know if anybody sees him come.
Correct. Alex and Yorgos currently not present.
Got it.
And with that, we will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
And to the republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so with that, we will move on to our guidelines for public input, but before we get to that, I would just turn it over to you, Jeff, to explain how this evening's program will work in our dual-language format, and then we can proceed from there.
Yeah, so tonight is the third parent meeting, and the first two parent meetings will appear on the website, the school district website, in translated form. Tonight will be translated in real time. So what will happen is that the elementary assistant principal Betty Reynoso will translate both questions from participants in this Zoom meeting, as well as the answers that are provided. So this is our first stab at it, and it's probably going to be a bit cumbersome because doing so in real time requires us to move a little slower. But I want to thank Betty for her willingness to give us a try, and we'll see, we'll see how it goes.
Hi, everyone.
Great. Hi, Betty.
My volume is okay? Is this right?
Perfect.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Jeff.
Um, so with that, as we've done the last few evenings, we'll proceed to the superintendent's comments and then open it up for public comment.
So I'll just provide a brief overview of where we're at with regard to the reopening. Our current plan is that on August 8th, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day, faculty and staff will return to school and will spend that week from Tuesday through Friday engaging professional development to better be prepared for remote learning, remote learning elements of the program that are in place currently. Kindergarten through eighth-grade students will return to school full-time, five days a week, normal bell schedule, on Monday, September 14th, and students in grades nine through 12 will also return to school in a hybrid format on Monday, September 14th. And that hybrid format will play out as follows. Half of the students will attend school in grades nine through 12 on Monday and Tuesday, with Wednesday being a cleaning day and a remote day, and the other half of the alphabet will attend school on Thursday and Friday. When the students who attend school on Monday and Tuesday are in session, the instruction will be live-streamed to the students who will be attending school on Thursday and Friday so they can follow along. And conversely, when the students who are attending school on Thursday and Friday, when that's happening, live instruction will be streamed to the students who were in attendance on Monday and Tuesday. So instruction will take place on a continuous basis, and we should be able to follow the scope and sequence that we would normally follow. The district has made purchases to make. Yep.
Do you mind if I, for the moment, just translate?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
There are two things I'm working, working with. One, how fast I could write. And two, programming my brain for what you said and translating it.
I go to a different place when I talk.
Buenas noches, soy la señora Reynoso. Soy administradora asistente en la escuela elemental. Yo estoy hablando de parte de superintendente de escuela, el señor que se llama Jeff Nichols. Él quiere introducir el plan para empezar la escuela ahora en septiembre. Por el momento, lo que tenemos es para el 8 de agosto, todos los que trabajan en la escuela, o sea, en la oficina y también los maestros, todos que trabajan empiezan día completo. Durante esa semana, el plan es para promotar conferencias y introducir cómo vamos a volver a la escuela. Los estudiantes por el momento van a empezar el 14 de agosto. En los grados que son pre-kindle, kindle hasta 8, van a empezar día completo de lunes a viernes, horario completo de lunes a viernes. Lo que están en la escuela secundaria, o sea, lo de el middle school y high school, de nueve a doce grado, van a entrar a una forma más limitado. El plan es que un grupo del afebatorio va a empezar lunes y martes completo el día. El miércoles va a ser un día de limpieza. Jueves y viernes va a venir el segundo parte del afebatorio. Durante ese tiempo, eso que están en la escuela van a estar en posición en vivo. O sea, lo que están en la casa van a poder entrar a la computadora y mirar la instrucción de los maestros. Lo que viene el lunes y el martes van a ser doble de vez para el jueves y el viernes. Lo que viene en el jueves y el viernes van a recibir lo que el grupo puede empezar de la semana recibió. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Betty. I'll be shorter moving forward.
I was gonna say, if we could just do shorter spurts, it might be a little easier for Miss Reynoso to translate.
So, so one of the key components of our reopening plan is that classes will have no more than 12 students at a time so that we can adhere to social distancing.
Okay. El plan para empezar la escuela es seguir la guía, o sea, los reglos del estado de Nueva York. Y eso que el número de estudiantes que estarán en la clase sea 12 estudiantes o menos por clase.
And to the extent possible, we are going to cohort students, which essentially means that we will try to keep them in one group throughout the day, thus limiting the extent to which they interact with other students beyond the 12 that they're grouped with.
El plan, o sea, el idea para empezar la escuela es que nosotros vamos a formar un grupo de estudiantes que van a mantener en ese grupo el día entero. Es el plan para empezar a escuela con ese grupo que se quedan juntos.
That notion of cohorting is a fairly straightforward process. In pre-kindergarten through ninth grade, it becomes more complicated in grades 10 through 12 as students have more variability in their course selections. So students will not be, they'll experience much less cohorting in grades 10 through 12.
Okay. Para los estudiantes que están en el pre-kindle hasta el grado nueve, es mucho más fácil y posible para mantener ese grupo junto el día entero. Donde empieza a ser un poquito más difícil es cuando estamos con los grados de diez grado hasta doce grado. Ese grupo sería un poquito más variado por los cursos que se ofrecen en ese nivel de grados.
In preparation for the upcoming year, the fact that we will not be able to utilize supplies and textbooks as we have in past years due to transmission, transmission concerns, we're initiating a Chromebook initiative where each and every student pre-K through 12 will receive a Chromebook at the start of the year for them to hold on to. And that will be the primary vehicle through which instruction is delivered and will reduce the extent to which students will have to carry books and backpacks and such.
Okay. El plan, el plan para el próximo año es limitar la cantidad de materiales que los estudiantes necesitan crear la escuela, por ejemplo, a los libros que se usan normalmente. La idea es que todos los estudiantes van a recibir una forma de computadora portable. Puede que sea una tabla o una computadora portable, dependiendo el nivel del estudiante. Y esa computadora o tabla va a ser para el uso solamente de esos estudiantes. Y esa sería la forma primariamente que los estudiantes van a recibir la instrucción.
For more information regarding our reopening plan and specific elements of the plan, I suggest that interested parents and community members reference the school district website where the reopening plan is posted along with specific information related to testing, contact tracing, and other elements of interest to the community.
Todos los familias y membros de la comunidad tienen acceso al documento y el plan que la escuela tiene en momento para abrir la escuela. Ese documento está puesto en la dirección de la escuela. Ahí usted pueda recibir información específico a preguntas que usted pudiera tener. Como ejemplo de cómo vamos a hacer pruebas para los estudiantes y los adultos, los maestros que están en la escuela. Todo eso está disponible al público en la página de la escuela de SAG Harbor Schools.
Thank you. With that, I would like to open it up for questions.
Sure. Let's see if there's any, any board members that had any questions that they either have or have received from the public that we think needs more clarification or explanation. One I would ask you to, Jeff, maybe to have you and the administrators address. I know we've touched on it and it's fluid, but how lunch will be presented or handled in the, in the different buildings. I saw an email that from the community, so if we could just maybe start with that and then we'll turn it over to the public.
Sure. So the tentative.
One moment, please.
Oh, sorry, yes.
En este, en este momento es para el público hacer cualquier pregunta que ellos tienen sobre el empezar de escuela. También este el momento de reunión de comité, hacer preguntas al superintendente, superintendente o administradores de la escuela.
So the tentative plan is to, it's the tentative meaning that it's the plan in place and things could change, but at this point, we plan on having all students eat lunch in their classrooms. And we're working with the food service department to arrange for delivery. I know Ms. Carriero has worked on that for grades six through 12. Do you want to talk a little bit about that? But first, let Betty translate.
Thank you. En este momento, el plan para los estudiantes recibir almuerzo sería en la clase. El departamento de servicios de comida y almuerzo están disponibles a preparar esa comida para todos los estudiantes recibir en su clase. Y ese va al sitio donde los estudiantes van a comer. Thanks, Betty. So students and parents for the middle high school will order breakfast and lunch and snacks for the week on My School Bucks. I was gonna do a sentence at a time. Is that okay, Betty? I thought that'd be easier. Okay, sure. Yeah. En este momento, en la dirección del internet, tiene manera de usted ordenar la comida de su estudiante. Eso sería en el sitio que se llama My School Bucks, donde usted puede ordenar el desayuno, el almuerzo, y también cualquier picadera que usted quisiera para su hijo o hija. It will, it will all be pre-bag delivered to the actual designated classrooms. And then for the high school, the same thing will happen for that half-day, not the half-day, for the hybrid model. So en este momento, todo lo almuerzo y comida que los estudiantes van a recibir va a estar preparado en avance de los estudiantes recibir esa comida y lo recibe en forma de una funda.
Mr. Malone, would you like to speak to the elementary program?
Sure. Good evening. Buenas noches. We, we will have lunch in the classrooms as our, as our plan and do our best to take advantage of the outside spaces to allow the children to eat outside when the weather allows us to do that.
El plan para escuela elementario sería que los estudiantes estarán comiendo su almuerzo en la clase. Cuando sea posible, nosotros tenemos el plan de utilizar el espacio afuera para lo que estudiantes quisieran comer afuera, eso se pudiera hacer.
Betty, before we move on to some additional questions, I just want to touch upon some key protocols for pre-K through 12. And first, all students before entering the school will have their parents and them answer a questionnaire every day.
Okay. En este momento, el protocolo para los estudiantes volver a la escuela sería los estudiantes y los padres de los estudiantes llenar un cuestionario que sería todos los días llenándolo antes de llegar a la escuela.
The questionnaire will include questions from the Center for Disease Control and the Department of Health addressing symptoms associated with COVID-19.
La pregunta es que estarán en el cuestionario es en sentido con la regla con el estado de enfermedad. De acuerdo, la pregunta es que lo tienen que hacer para los estudiantes poder estar en escuela.
In addition to the questionnaire, all students will be, will go through a temperature scanner prior to entering school. And if the scanner picks up a temperature of 100 or above, those students will then have their temperature checked a second time by school personnel. The goal being to not admit any student into the school who has a temperature.
Nosotros tenemos disponible ahora cuando los estudiantes entran a escuela tener, estar obligado a tomar su temperatura antes de estar en escuela. Cuando eso sea la temperatura de 100 o más, una enfermera o otro personal de escuela le tomará la temperatura una segunda vez a ver si sigue igual.
Once in the school, students, faculty, and staff will be required to wear masks at all times, with the exception of mask breaks, which we will try to place multiple times during the school day.
El plan entrando a escuela en septiembre es que todos los que están en la escuela, o sea, los niños, los que trabajan en la escuela, los maestros, están obligados a tener máscara 100% del tiempo que está en la escuela, o sea, el día entero tienen que tener máscara. Durante el día, nosotros tendrán tiempo de reposo, de usar la máscara, y eso lo tratamos de hacer lo más frecuentemente que se puede.
That pretty much covers what I wanted to address. Brian, do you want to see if the Board of Education has any more questions?
Yeah, I think it was important to dictate mask policy and entry policy. Board members or anything else that we should put in terms of this announcement part before we turn to questions?
Ahora le hacemos preguntas del Comité de Educación antes de abrir las preguntas al público.
Um, Brian, you mentioned earlier about questions that have been fielded from the public. I think that we've had a couple of groups of questions come in from multiple parents that might be helpful to share here. One is, what are the plans for BOSIs for the fall and the implications based on being compatible with what we're doing in our district? And then the second was just very recently, we've had many parents ask us about a different kind of schedule in the elementary school. That was more a hybrid schedule for the younger students. So, and I, you know, because that's very recent, we may not be prepared to answer that if we haven't had a chance to consider it. But those are kind of two groups of questions we've had in the past week.
So I'll, I'll address both of those.
Mr. Nichols, do you mind if I just translate that?
Thanks.
La señora de la Comité de Educación quiere hacer referencia a preguntas que ya uno cuanto padres han hecho. Una de esa pregunta es cuál el plan para la escuela en sentido de los estudiantes que reciben servicios afuera de escuela, por ejemplo, la organización que se llama BOSIs. Otra pregunta que se ha hecho es si existe la posibilidad de estudiantes en la escuela elemental y un poquito más grande recibir una forma más en, en sentido de remoto. O sea, una parte en escuela y una parte en la casa por computadora.
So with regard to BOSIs programs, those typically take place at the high school level. And they're comprised of students who have IEPs, who have special services or services outlined in their IEP. Some of the time, they have to go off-site to BOSIs programs. And then there are also students who are enrolled in occupational education programs where they go learn a specific skill, usually for half a day, and then return for the other half of the day at their home district, in our case, SAG Harbor. So the BOSIs program transportation will begin on Tuesday, September 8th, or Wednesday, September 9th, depending on the program, and that could change. But the students will be transported as they normally would. They will go to the program, they will come back, and they will participate in whatever the program that's in place at Pearson when they return. So if they are in a remote program at Pearson, if that's what they select, they would go half-day to the BOSIs program and then return and do remote. If they were in-person, that would be what they would do. With regard to the schedule question, within the last day, actually, I don't think it was.
Do you mind if I translate that question? Thank you. En sentido del plan para la organización, la mayoría de estudiantes que reciben ese servicio es en la escuela secundaria, y primariamente sería los estudiantes que reciben servicios especial. Por ejemplo, hay algunos estudiantes que reciben educación ocupacional. Esos estudiantes pueden que reciben esa asistencia por parte del día y después de esa parte del día regresan a la escuela Pearson. Eso pudiera depender en cuál opción ellos desearon, o sea, parte del día recibiendo información remoto o parte del día recibiendo información en vivo en escuela. Eso está calculado para empezar el martes el 8 de septiembre, o tal vez miércoles el 9 de septiembre. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. With regard to the second question, which was really questions that came in today and last night regarding a hybrid model at the elementary school. I spoke with Mr. Malone at length about it, and I'll let him weigh in in a moment. But big picture, at this point, once settled on a model, there's an awful lot of planning that needs to be done between now and September 8th, and indeed, September 14th. And that planning is not limited to staffing, getting the, the classroom set up, traffic patterns in the hallways, including tape on the floor so that there are flows of traffic where we can assure social distancing. So big picture, I have significant reservations about adjusting our plans when we're going to be in school in a few weeks. And I think we're very hard-pressed for time to even put into place what we've come up with. I think we can get it done, but I think we have to be very careful about entertaining other plans that could divert our focus from what needs to be done. With that, though, I'll let Mr. Malone weigh in specifically on what we talked about earlier.
Okay. Una pregunta que llegaron a recibir hoy fue la idea si sería posible en la escuela elemental dar una opción de los estudiantes recibir educación o instrucción remoto y también como parte de la escuela en vivo, si eso sería posible. Lo que el superintendente dice es que en un punto que nosotros estamos estabilizado en un plan, o sea, el plan para empezar la escuela el 8 de septiembre y los estudiantes entrar el 14 de septiembre, ya este momento han empezado a organizar ese plan en sentido de horarios, en el sentido de la clase, en sentido de organizar el tráfico y cómo los estudiantes van a moverse en la escuela. Para nosotros ajustar ese plan en ese momento sería muy difícil porque tenemos el compromiso de tiempo para tratar de empezar la escuela a el plan que tenemos originalmente. Sería una distracción hacer algo diferente a este punto.
Mr. Malone?
Sure. To follow up on Mr. Nichols' comment, just many, many creative ideas have been presented by members of the community, and they are very much appreciated. One that was shared recently by a few families was to create specific cohorts within our larger cohorting model to allow for a hybrid model.
En este momento, nosotros hemos recibido muchos, muchos ideas creativos y lo apreciamos. Lo importante saber es que una de esa idea de grupar los estudiantes en un punto limitado sería muy difícil hacer a este punto, aunque nosotros apreciamos las ideas que han ofrecido.
And, and that hybrid model would, therefore, the idea was that some students could attend for a shorter day. And while there are some positives to that suggestion, being just realistic and being as honest as we can through this whole process to divert attention to such a model, I don't believe we could give that the due diligence that it needs to be done properly. And I also think it would take, take our attention away from creating the safest in-person model for the elementary students, as well as a robust remote learning model.
La idea o el plan era para organizar un día más corto para los estudiantes. Eso sería difícil y no sería tan posible porque eso pudiera ser una distracción de la atención que nosotros tenemos que poner en seguir las reglas y estar seguro que todos los estudiantes se sienten seguros en la escuela ahora en este momento. Si nosotros empezamos a organizar ese grupo, esto sería una distracción de abrir la escuela ahora, el punto que sea más sano para los estudiantes.
Thanks, Betty. Any other questions, Brian, from the board before we move on to the public?
Board members? I don't think so. So let's go to the, turn it over, Scott, for any questions. And I would just remind the public that when you ask your question, Ms. Reynoso will then translate your question before the answer is given. With that, we'll take the first hand, Scott.
We will start with Annabelle Rousseau.
Hi, please, please give us your full name, and then you have three minutes.
My name is Annabelle Rousseau, and my question is about like the cohorts in the middle school. In my grade, there's like 10 kids who are taking French, so how are you gonna like split it up? Are you gonna do like French all online or something?
You want me to answer?
That'd be great.
We can get the question translated first, please.
Yeah.
Question translated, yeah.
La pregunta fue cómo en la escuela intermedia pudieran organizar el grupo de estudiantes que ahora es el número de 10 estudiantes que están aprendiendo francés.
So, Annabelle, this is funny. I was just working on this today. So you 10 kids are a cohort, and you're gonna be with each other all day long. However, during that cohort, because some of you guys might be taking math eight or algebra, that is the only time you will split. The other section of that pod has the same, same thing. So what we did is we created four sections for each class, and they are going to rotate. So the way you guys are gonna be broken up is the French cohort is going to stay the same, but when you have math, and you will be in a different class. Does that make sense? All right?
Yeah.
La idea es que. La idea es que esos estudiantes que están tomando ese idioma, por ejemplo, francés, van a estar junto la mayoría del día. El único tiempo que eso sería diferente es cuando están cogiendo diferentes clases, como ejemplo matemática. Ese grupo sería partido cuatro diferentes veces para cada clase que están cogiendo. So ellos estarán turnando cuando tiene que cambiar de clase, por ejemplo, a esa que se llama matemática, cuando la radio es diferente.
Okay, next up, we're going to be moving to Emily Kaplan.
Please give us your, your full name and then you have three minutes. After you ask your question, it'll be translated and then we will give you an answer the best we can.
This is Isabel Kaplan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm entering ninth grade this year. I just entered these questions in the chat as well. One, will students in the classroom with the teacher be able to see the remote students? And will the remote students be able to see the in-person students? If we're unable to see each other, how will question-answer periods be held? Two, are students who choose the fully remote option going to have separate classes? Or are they going to be watching the students in person having class? And three, in the hybrid model, would a high schooler's schedule differ on the days they were in school and the days they were remote? Or would they have the same classes in the same order? For example, if I geometry first period when I was in school.
Isabel, I'm just, I'm gonna give you more time than three minutes, but we just want Ms. Reynoso to be able to translate. So we'll translate your first two questions and then we'll go to the next two questions. We're not, we're gonna keep you on and we're not gonna shorten your time, but for translation purposes, we just wanna help out. Let Ms. Reynoso, thank you.
For that, because I don't know if I could say that in three minutes or under.
No, no, that's, we'll be okay with that.
I appreciate you writing down your questions because I am able to pull it up and see it, so that's great, thank you. That's a big help. La pregunta primera que hizo la que se llama Isabel es si los estudiantes están recibiendo la clase por remoto, si la maestra pudiera ver los estudiantes en ese momento y también a ver los estudiantes ver la maestra. La segunda pregunta era si los estudiantes están recibiendo clase en remoto en ese punto durante ese tiempo si ellos pudieran ver la maestra y también los estudiantes también en vivo cuando ellos están recibiendo esa lectura en la casa en forma remoto. Those were the two questions.
So Jeff, if we wanna take questions one and two first and then Isabel, please hang in with us. We'll unmute your mic for your next question.
Sure. So question number one, the plan at this point is to have a webcam in each classroom and that webcam, which is basically a camera, is going to be focused on the front of the room. So let's say there's a smartboard in the front of the room. It would include the smartboard and probably about five feet on either side of the smartboard. That view, if you will, will primarily be teacher-centered. So the students who are studying from home will, for the most part, not be seeing the students who are in the room. Their, their view will include the teacher when he or she is near the smartboard and the smartboard. The teacher will have a microphone and will be able to, along with the microphone, a earbud and will be able to either read the questions. We might have a TA do that from students who are studying remotely or he or she may hear them through what's placed in his or her ear. So that's the, the plan for how the classes will run. There won't be a lot of video interfacing between the students who are studying at home and the students who are studying in the school. The focus will be primarily on the smartboard and the teacher. With regard to question, so go ahead, Ms. Reynoso.
Thank you. Para la pregunta, la primera pregunta que se hizo, enfrente de la clase, la clase va a ver una cámara. Esa cámara sería enfocada primariamente con la maestra. La vista que los estudiantes van a estar viendo en la casa cuando ellos están estudiando de forma remoto sería solamente de la maestra o el maestro y la pizarra, no los estudiantes. Donde los estudiantes van a estar enfocando es cuando la maestra está hablando y va a estar hablando en un micrófono. También existe la posibilidad de un asistente a la maestra leer alguna de las preguntas que ella tendrá o ellos tendrán y después la cámara sería enfocado en esa persona que está hablando. Pero esos estudiantes que están recibiendo la lectura en la casa por forma remota no van a poder ver los estudiantes en la escuela y los estudiantes que están en la escuela no van a poder ver los estudiantes que están recibiendo la lectura en forma remoto.
Okay. With regard to, thank you, Betty, with regard to question number two, students who, who choose the fully remote option will not have separate classes. They will essentially be following the schedule that they would follow if they had chosen to be in school. So I'll receive a schedule of Jeff Nichols was studying remotely. I would receive a schedule and I would be on my Chromebook following the classes. It's called, well, basically synchronous live instruction. So I'd be following what was taking place in the classrooms throughout the day. I'd follow a normal bell schedule and I would be participating in the class, just doing it remotely.
Betty?
Yes, may I?
Yes, please.
Los estudiantes que están recibiendo la lectura o instrucción en forma remoto no van a estar recibiendo clases separadas. Esos estudiantes van a recibir un horario que sigue la selección de los estudiantes que, que seleccionaron esa clase para escuela. El ejemplo que el señor Nichols dio fue que él, si él tiene un horario o una clase, él va a recibir ese horario y seguir el timbre de la clase y seguir eso día por día y en ese momento. No va a ser un horario o plan diferente.
Thank you, Betty. Would you read question?
Well, I think we just had one question, I think, Sandy, I saw you raise your hand. Did it, something to point out respect to those questions?
I did. I think that the kids might be thinking that there might be socialization between them and the class during the course of the day. But I think that's probably the root of that question, so I think we should clarify that.
All right, Betty, please.
Socialization amongst each other, the kids.
La señora hizo la pregunta que tal vez, de dónde viene esa pregunta si los estudiantes van a poder ser sociables cuando ellos están, o sea, en la clase o recibiendo esa lectura remoto y la respuesta no, eso no va a ser posible.
Jeff?
Thank you. So there, there will not be socialization occurring between those students who are studying remotely and those students who are in a class. They will hear each other ask questions and the questions will be presented and answered. But to suggest that the socialization would replicate what would take place in a normal class setting would be inaccurate.
Okay. If I may say, I sort of knew the answer to that and I already gave. Let me just clarify, though.
Si los estudiantes, por ejemplo, tienen preguntas y la respuesta a la pregunta está hecho en forma remoto o en la clase, los estudiantes no van a tener la posibilidad de ser sociables en ese momento cuando están recibiendo la lectura.
Thank you. And Isabel, if you're there, would you like to ask your third question, please?
Yes, thank you. In the hybrid model, would a high schooler's schedule differ on the days they were in school and the days they were remote? Or would they have the same classes in the same order? For example, if I geometry first period when I was in school, would I have geometry first period on the days I was remote? I think you might have already answered this, but, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Reynoso?
La pregunta es si los estudiantes están recibiendo parte de su lectura en la casa de forma remoto y en un día que ellos están recibiendo la lectura, por ejemplo, en geometra, vamos, geometra, vamos a decir que esa clase empieza a empezar del día, si eso va a ser lo mismo cuando ellos están en vivo en persona en escuela.
In answer to the question, the schedule is exactly the same on the days that you're in session versus remote. So you would be following a normal schedule. The only difference would be you would either be in school or you would be at home depending on the day of the week.
La respuesta es que sí va a ser igual, no importa donde usted está recibiendo la lectura. El horario que usted recibe va a ser lo mismo en la casa cuando está recibiendo la lectura en remoto, igual como usted recibiera la lectura cuando usted está en escuela.
Thank you.
Scott, the next hand, please.
Yes, the next person up will be Jessica Belafato.
Hi, if you're there, please give us your full name and you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Jessica Belafato. I was actually wondering in terms of you, you, you touched a little bit on the mask breaks and I was wondering if you do have a sense of what that looks like for children and staff and yeah, if, how many throughout the day and what that actually looks like.
Ms. Reynoso?
La pregunta es si tenemos una idea de cuando tomamos reposo de tener la máscara, si puede darle una idea de cómo eso va a ser para los estudiantes, los niños y también los adultos.
Mr. Nichols?
So the, we're in the process of planning it, but if I were to give a range, I would say somewhere between four and seven mask breaks a day. And those mask breaks would take place preferably outside. So we're in the process of looking into getting the permitting for tents. We've reached out to our architects to see what we need to do in order to make that happen. And we would utilize those tents for mask breaks during inclement weather, knowing that we would like the mask breaks to take place outside where there's better air circulation.
El plan por el momento, la idea es que los estudiantes y los adultos pudieran tener cuatro a siete tiempo de reposo de usar la máscara. Nosotros ahora mismo estamos en el proceso de obtener un permiso para tener los estudiantes afuera por, por un tiempo designado y la idea es que eso pudiera ser cuatro a siete veces al día que ellos pudieran tomar ese reposo.
Thank you. Next question, please, Scott.
Next up is Daniela Garnica. But we cannot proceed with her because she doesn't have the latest version of the browser, of the Zoom app.
So Daniela, if we could have you type your question into the chat box, we would then read it for you. And perhaps Jeff, you and Scott could work on putting out an email or putting on the webpage what version of Zoom going forward people would need so that they can hopefully download it prior to. Doesn't happen often, but at least they would be aware and know what, what version they would need.
I'll take care of that.
And, and thank you. And then with that, I'm just gonna move the chat box over. Let's go to if we wanted to start with the first question from David, Jeff, the simpler format maybe if you wanna read it, Betty can translate it and then we can answer it, just to, so that you're both, you and Betty can both read from the chat box. We'll start with David.
Sure, so I will read it and then, oops, my chat box just disappeared. Let me pull it up. Okay, can you provide an update on new student enrollment in the district? And was there a decision made regarding, made regarding out-of-district tuition admissions? Betty?
La pregunta es si han tomado una decisión, si van a tener permiso de entrar estudiantes que viven afuera del distrito en este momento.
So student enrollment in the district continues to climb. Just this week, we received over 10 new district or in-district registrations. So we're up to 60, over 60 new pre-K through 12. The administrators have met and as of today, the decision is to admit non-resident new, excuse me, new non-resident tuition-paying families in grades six through 12. And we're putting a hold and not admitting anybody pre-K through five. Again, that's the decision as of today.
Okay. Nosotros reconocemos el interés de estar en esta escuela y cada momento eso está cambiando. El interés está creciendo y tenemos 60 estudiantes interesados y nuevos en la escuela del pre-ken德 hasta el grado 12. En este momento estamos disponibles abrir esa residencia, lo que no viven en la escuela, de grado seis a doce. Pero en este momento vamos a frenar o no empezar a entrar todavía en el pre-ken德 hasta el grado cinco.
Question number two, will there be any opportunity for students to visit classrooms and/or teachers ahead of the 14th?
La segunda pregunta es si va a haber la oportunidad de estudiantes visitar la clase o los maestros antes del 14 de septiembre.
So the answer to the question, I'll speak for the middle school, high school. Mr. Malone, you can chime in for pre-K through five. But teachers are scheduled to arrive on September 8th and will be engaged in professional development that Tuesday through Friday. So they will not be free to host any visits from students and/or parents prior to the 14th.
Okay. Empezando el 8 de septiembre en la escuela intermedia, los maestros van a entrar, pero ellos van a estar recibiendo asistencia profesional. So ellos no van a estar disponibles para recibir visita en ese momento.
Just to add on, though, if students, once they receive their schedules, have questions that they would like to pose to their teachers or parents have questions that they would like to pose to their children's teachers, certainly, once teachers begin on the eighth, those questions can be posted via email and the teachers, of course, will respond.
Naturalmente entendemos que los estudiantes pueda que van a tener preguntas para sus maestros. También los padres pueda que tengan preguntas a los maestros. Empezando el 8 de septiembre, los maestros van a poder estar disponibles recibir correo electrónico.
Mr. Malone?
Yes, I think to support new students as well as the students who will be returning after being away from our school throughout the spring, we're going to focus our attention on some welcome back videos as well as leveraging technologies such as Google Meet or Zoom meetings to help bring everybody back on board and especially welcome students who are new to the community.
Nosotros queremos reconocer en la escuela elemental los estudiantes que son nuevos para nosotros y soportar también esos estudiantes que estuvieron afuera de escuela durante primavera. Nosotros vamos a estar enfocando en enseñar videos. Bienvenido a los estudiantes volviendo a escuela. También queremos que los estudiantes tengan un nivel de entender la programa que se llama Google Meet y bienvenir a todo lo que entren al edificio.
Question number three, do you anticipate any opportunity for students to interact with classmates outside of their cohort? Whether it be with their remote half of their cohort or outdoors or any other setting? Thanks so much. So there, this.
La número tres, si nosotros anticipamos la oportunidad de estudiantes estar junto con otros estudiantes afuera de su grupo. Eso, la pregunta es si pudiera ser en forma remoto o si pudiera ser afuera en otro ambiente.
So I'll give a big picture answer. We had a meeting with teachers and staff earlier today and we're putting our focus on, at this point, opening school, the school day, that is, for the middle school, high school, the seven-hour day for the elementary school, a similar day, and making that as safe as possible. Once that environment, we feel is safe and we have a week or two to assess it, then we can turn our focus to after-school activities, things outside of the normal school day to see if we can add anything that's going to increase the interaction that's referenced in the question. But obviously, the lens that we apply is safety first. And if we can do something safely and provide for that interaction, we'll do so.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
I need more paper.
Betty, thank you. I know it's a lot, so maybe we break up the answers a little bit more, Jeff, a little...
I went through one whole writing tablet already.
So de la manera que podemos dar una respuesta mejor a esto, es un ejemplo de hoy. Tuvimos una reunión con todos los maestros y las personas que trabajan en la escuela. Y primeramente tenemos que enfocar el abril de escuela y estar seguro que nosotros estamos ofreciendo un ambiente más sano y más seguro posible. Tal vez después de una o dos semanas, unas cuantas semanas, nosotros pudiéramos visitar eso de nuevo a ver si existe la posibilidad de tener los estudiantes haciendo más actividades afuera y también de recreación.
Okay.
Betty, before we go on, I want to apologize that I definitely picked up that I'm the worst at this because I have the longest answers. I'm very verbose, so...
Okay, I appreciate the detail. It's good. Thank you.
Sorry. Brian, do you want to see if there are any hands raised or do you want to continue with the chat?
If we can continue with the questions, I see the same hand that we, if Daniela can hear us. They could ask the question.
I think she may have tried again, Brian. You want to see if we can get her to go?
Yeah, and then we'll proceed to the questions in the chat room after, yeah.
Okay, so I was mistaken. So we're gonna have to have her do it in the chat room until, and we'll get up the version of the Zoom required on the web tomorrow. So she did ask the question and her question is, how do we know who is going to do Zoom and who is going to be in the school? Betty?
Yes, hello?
Yeah, so the question was, how do we know who is going to do Zoom and who is going to be in the school? I'm not sure if Betty's... Betty, can you hear me?
I'm muted.
Betty, we're wondering if you're there. She must have had some, she must have some poor internet connectivity at this time.
Let's give her a moment.
I can translate that question, Jeff.
Okay.
Oh, perfect.
¿Cómo sabemos quién va a hacer Zoom y quién va a estar en la escuela?
Thanks, Mr. Guyan.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not sure what that question is really asking, but if it is asking, how do we know which students are going to be electing the remote option versus those who are electing to be in school? The school district plans on sending out a survey. I don't even want to call it a survey, but a form that will ask parents to identify which option their child chooses to begin the year. Betty, are you back? Mr. Guyan?
Señor Nichols no entiende qué es la pregunta específicamente, pero antes de empezar la escuela va a hacer una furja a la gente de la escuela donde que la gente significa, lo siento por mi español, tu preferencia por va a estar en la escuela o hacer Zoom.
Mr. Reynoso, will you grade Mr. Guyan?
Oh, Mr. Reynoso muted.
Lo siento, Betty.
Unmute, Betty. There you go.
My internet just blinked.
Okay, good.
Where I left off at was Daniela Garnica, I think had a question on how the selection was gonna be for the Zoom, the remote learning rather, and those that are gonna be live in person.
Yes. So she just wrote another question that says, it's because you were saying that some will be online and some will be in the school.
I think she's asking about if, what kids are gonna be in her, like the grade, like if she knows her kid's friends are gonna be in the same cohort or if they're gonna be remote.
We won't be able to share that information with parents. They have to make their selection as to what they would like their child to do. And then once we have the information, we set up the cohorts.
Okay. So la respuesta a la pregunta de cómo vamos a seleccionar los estudiantes que van a recibir esa información por forma remoto o en persona, y eso es algo que los padres van a seleccionar. Eso no es una decisión de los administradores.
And Mr. Reynoso, if you could add to my response that the selection as to which option a parent chooses for their child, whether it's the remote or the in-person instruction, that is not a selection that they have to stick to for the entire year. So if they want to change their choice, they can do so, but they just have to give the school enough time to accommodate that request and make sure conditions are safe before the switch is actually made.
Okay. So en ese sentido, si, para seleccionar los padres que deciden la opción de recibir la lectura o instrucción de forma remoto o en vivo, los padres tienen la opción de cambiar de idea. Lo único que se pide es que den suficiente tiempo para los administradores hacer ese cambio. Pero sí existe la posibilidad de cambiar aunque usted tomara tal decisión al principio.
Thank you. I'm gonna, Brian, move on to another question that was asked in the chat.
Yes, please. Yep.
It's asked by an 11th grade student who asks, Madeline Stuckert, I'm going into 11th grade. I was wondering if we have to follow the bell schedule during the live streams and if we will be provided with whatever work they are doing those days I'm not in school.
La pregunta vino de un estudiante que está en el once grado y la pregunta es si van a tener que seguir el horario del timbre que están recibiendo la escuela y también cómo van a recibir esa lectura o materia que existe durante el día.
So the answer to the question is yes, you do have to follow the bell schedule and you, and yes, you will be provided with whatever work they are doing those days that you were not in school.
La respuesta es sí, para la do pregunta, si usted tendrá que recibir información, perdón, my computer's acting up. Si usted va a recibir, usted va a necesitar usar el timbre de la escuela y si usted va a recibir la materia que no recibiste durante el tiempo que no estuviste en la escuela.
And there will be a significant shift in the types of materials that will be utilized during the instructional periods. The primary mechanism through which content will be delivered in terms of questions and textbooks and things like that will be the Chromebook.
Sí va a ser un cambio significante en sentido de la forma que usted va a recibir información o materiales. Usted va a recibir la información primaramente por su tabla o su computadora portable.
Thank you, Betty. Mary Ann Ward asks, I'm curious as to how bathroom breaks will work for social distancing. For example, you could have one child from each classroom has to use the bathroom at the same time. Is there a plan or plan in the works for this possible situation?
La pregunta tiene que ver con usar el baño y si la pregunta existe que dos estudiantes necesitan usar el baño al mismo vez, cómo va a resolver ese problema.
So the answer to that question is there is a plan in the works. And what we're focusing on right now, along with how to approach bathroom breaks and to ensure that there's only one child that goes into the bathroom at a given time, is also, we're also focusing on dismissal from classes and staggering those dismissals so that we essentially with all transition, transitions in the school, limit the extent to which students are in close proximity to each other, so we can maintain social distancing.
Nosotros estamos en el momento trabajando en un sistema que pudiera trabajar para todos, pero si a los niños, los estudiantes tendrán que usar el estudiante, el baño, un estudiante por uso del baño. Nosotros también estamos enfocando en el horario de los niños, los estudiantes salir de escuela. Es posible que nosotros tendramos horario diferente para cada grupo saliendo de la escuela y también una forma diferente de transicional de escuela, limitando la distancia y la interacción que los estudiantes van a tener junto.
Thank you, Betty. Brian, that does it for the chat questions. Scott, are there any other hands raised at this time?
Yes, there appears to be one. Cecilia Barahona? Actually, there's two. We'll go with her first. She has the same issue, so I will definitely get that on. Cecilia, if you could put your question in the chat window, that would be helpful.
Before you go there, Scott, we'll just let Mr. Reynoso, yep, sorry. Go ahead, Betty. Thank you.
Cecilia, hola señora. Usted pudiera hacer la pregunta si quiere en español y tiene que escribirlo porque parece que no tiene la sistema más recién para poder hablar, pero puede escribir su pregunta.
So it looks as though there's a question from Dolores Yanza. And she asks, her daughter is going to school, high school, for the first time. How will she receive classes? So...
La pregunta es, está preguntando sobre su niña que va a empezar la escuela intermedia por primera vez y cómo ella va a recibir su horario para empezar.
So, Mr. Reynoso, what I'd like to say with regard to this question is, in addition to me answering the question and going over the two options, I want to encourage the parent to contact the school tomorrow and we can provide a more detailed answer since it's her daughter's, it sounds like her daughter's first time in school. We can walk her through that in more detail. Why don't we start with that?
So lo que el señor Nichols, el superintendente, está recomendando es como eso sería, esto sería la primera vez que su hija está empezando la escuela intermedia. La recomendación es si usted pudiera venir a la escuela y recibir esa información con más detalle en vivo.
And she can reach any of the administrators via email or telephone.
Y también usted pudiera tener contacto con cualquier administrador o sea por teléfono o correo electrónico.
Yes, and with regard to the specific question, there are two choices for high school students. They can elect to study in school, in which case they would go to school in person two days a week and study remotely three days per week. Or they can elect to study entirely remotely, where they would be studying five days a week from home.
En este momento usted tendrá dos opciones para su hija empezar la escuela y eso es que pudiera seleccionar la opción de estar en la escuela dos veces, dos veces al día a la semana, perdón, dos veces a la semana o recibir la lectura completamente en forma remoto de la casa.
Thank you, Betty. The next question is from Emily McLean, who says, hi panelists, I'm so sorry I'm late to the call. Mr. Malone, you mentioned addressing my email today regarding the hybrid option for younger elementary students, part-time, in-person. Did you address this already?
La pregunta es sobre un correo electrónico que mandó al administrador, el señor Malone, sobre la opción de los estudiantes más jóvenes recibir la lectura parte de forma remoto.
Mr. Malone?
Sure. Good evening, Emily. Yes, we did address your question at the very beginning of the meeting tonight. And the summation was while the idea does have some benefits, with all the time and effort being put into the reopening plan as well as creating the remote plan, we do not believe we could give the care and attention to creating a hybrid such as this.
La pregunta y respuesta fue algo que hicimos al empezar de esta reunión y es la idea que no podemos en este momento ofrecer un ambiente que sería sano y seguro para los estudiantes en forma de remoto. El plan es tratar de abrir la escuela completamente en vivo en la escuela elemental, enfocando en lo que sea más sano y seguro para los niños.
Betty, the next two questions are chat questions that were written in Spanish. So I'm wondering if you might be able to read those or translate and then we can answer them.
Oh, there they are, okay. Buenas tardes. Boy, I'm really being tested today. Buenas tardes con todas mis preguntas, es mínimo. Tienen asma. Okay, so one question is from Ms. Barahona and that is that her, it appears, it looks like her son has asthma. So will he be able to receive classes at home and her other children as well? I can answer that. I believe it's, the answer is obviously, the option is to the parents always.
Cecilia, so referente a la pregunta que usted hizo con su hijo que tiene asma, la opción siempre existe con los padres. Usted puede tomar la decisión de tener la lectura o escuela en la casa en forma remoto.
Thank you, Betty. And the next question is from Ms. Perez.
The question is, what is the date or the cutoff for parents to decide when they could choose remote or school in person?
So the survey will be going out tomorrow, Friday, and the answers will be back by, will be due back by Tuesday. That's the deadline for the original or the initial notification to the school so that we can meaningfully engage in the planning of the classes.
Referente a la pregunta, decidiendo cuando usted pudiera tomar la decisión, la escuela va a mandar un cuestionario mañana a todos los padres de la escuela de Sag Harbor. Usted tendrá que expresar sus deseos y eso tendrá que mandarlo, did you say Tuesday? Is that the 25th, 26th?
Tuesday, I'm not sure of the day.
Twenty fifth.
Okay. Eso, ese cuestionario tendrá que entregarlo lo más tarde, Maltese, el 25 de agosto.
Thank you. Next question. Hi, this is George Finelli and I'm going into fifth grade. Will classes be livestreamed for elementary school for those choosing remote option? If not, will parents see which teachers are remote and which are in person? Will parents know which teachers are remote and which are in person before answering the survey?
La pregunta tiene que ver con un estudiante que está entrando en el quinto grado y la pregunta es si los estudiantes que están recibiendo la lectura en vivo, comparado a los estudiantes que están recibiendo la lectura por remoto, si ellos pudieran saber cuál maestros y cuál estudiantes están recibiendo la lectura en persona o en remoto y si los padres pudieran saber cuáles están recibiendo eso.
Mr. Malone, do you want to address that?
Sure. Good evening, Georgie. Thank you for your question. The plan for the elementary school remote learning is to actually create grade-level remote classes and a teacher or teachers would be assigned to instruct those classes throughout the course of the day. Provide live instruction to the group, provide small group instruction, which would also be live on the Google Meet and also meet with individual students throughout the day.
El plan para la escuela elemental es que a todos los estudiantes que están recibiendo clase remoto van a tener una maestra asignado a ellos y esa maestra va a dar la lectura a toda la clase durante el día entero. Eso sería forma de la programa que se llama Google Meet y eso sería... Eso sería forma de la programa que se llama Google Meet y eso sería durante el tiempo entero de escuela.
And, and the second part of the question?
The second part of the question was, "Will you know which teachers are remote and which are in-person before answering the survey?" So, the answer to that would be no. When parents are making the selection for their children on the form that's coming out in the, in the next day, we ask parents to make the best decision for their child and their family, and then we will then use that information to properly staff both our in-person classes and our remote learning classes.
La respuesta es no. Los padres tendrán que decidir cuál clase es más conveniente o más positivo para su familia. Los clases van a estar organizados, después cuando nosotros recibimos la respuesta del cuestionario, a ese punto nosotros vamos a designar la maestra que sería con ese estudiante.
Okay, I think that was it, yes.
Great. Next question. Mr. Nichols, can I just add, add to my response there?
Sure.
Sure. I think for the elementary parents who are considering the remote option, I would, I would just want to impress upon all that, we know that during the spring, there were some challenges with our remote plan, but we've been putting a lot of time and energy into training and putting a lot of good thought into ensuring that the remote option is, is a robust one and will be a good option for their children if they so choose that. Thank you, Ms. Malone.
El director también quiere que usted sepa si, que usted debe saber que nosotros estamos poniendo mucha energía en, en los maestros recibir ayuda profesional en cómo trabajar esos sistemas remoto, en una manera que seguía mejor de lo que hubo en la primavera, cuando ese tiempo fue muy difícil y el empezar para todos. Nosotros estamos poniendo mucho tiempo y investigando diferentes programas para promover el entender los maestros, utilizar eso de una forma mejor.
Thank you Betty. The next question is from Cynthia McKelvey. "Will the survey be available online as well? Our mail is being delivered unreliable and slow these days." So the survey will be online. That's the mechanism through which it will be delivered. So the mail...
Entirely correct.
Pardon me?
Entirely online?
Yes.
Okay. La pregunta es si, si la familia pudiera recibir el cuestionario por el internet, o sea por su correo electrónico, y eso va a ser la manera que lo vamos a hacer para todo. O sea, no va a ser por correo postal sino por correo electrónico.
Mr. Nichols, we have two people with their hands up. You want to take their questions?
Yes, we, let's go to them, Scott please. Who's up first? Looks like Helen Russell.
Go ahead Helen.
Helen, please just give us your full name. You have three minutes and I would just ask that you take some breaks in between your question to allow Ms. Reynoso to translate.
Hi there, good evening everybody. My question is, I wanted to know, because it sounds, from what I can hear, it sounds very complicated. I mean, not very complicated, but it's complex, the whole, the way that you're going to have to run the school is quite complicated, it is, because you have many small class, small classes, and then you have students, some students leaving that class and going to another class, then you're going to have mask breaks, you know, and the PE and all of this stuff. I mean, and I'm just wondering, I know you have four days for training.
Helen, I'm just going to stop you right there for one moment.
Okay.
So let Ms. Reynoso translate that and then we will let you continue with the question.
La señora está reconociendo que parece que el empezar de escuela o el intento de abrir la escuela es muy complicado. En ese sentido, formando clases que van a estar pequeños, también entendiendo que algunos estudiantes van a ir de un clase a otro clase, también tomando un tiempo de reposo para la máscara y también un tiempo para los estudiantes poder usar el baño.
Continue Helen.
Okay. So looking at that, at the whole picture, it's, there's a lot of, there's a major system there that everybody is going to have to follow and, you know, you're going to have to really, you know, set it out very, very clearly for the teachers, because they have like two jobs now, you know, three, if you like. They've got the online stuff, you know, they've got to watch out for their health, the health of other people, and then they've got to be able to escort the students in and out and all that has to do with timing, you know, and so there's basically a lot of protocols that have to be followed and a system that has to be followed. And I'm wondering, you only have four days set aside so far for online training, and I'm wondering, are you going to set aside at least two days to train the teachers on these systems that you're going to have to be, that you're adopting and that you're going to have to be implementing, so that they feel confident about how to escort the students around, about, you know?
I'm going to stop you there for one second Helen.
Okay.
Ms. Reynoso please.
So, siguiendo con la pregunta, es que nosotros tenemos que, entiende que tenemos que reconocer la sistema va a cambiar significativamente y va a ser diferente, va a haber reglas que todos van a tener que seguir, seguir reglas para las maestras, ese tiempo que ellos tienen que pasar enseñando la lectura por forma remoto, también esos maestros que tienen que seguir los estudiantes de una parte del edificio a otro, y también el entender que eso necesita mucho tiempo y cuál sería el protocolo para eso. Entendiendo que eso, tenemos designado cuatro días para ese tiempo y entrenar a los maestros, la pregunta es si pueden tener dos días para enseñar esta nueva sistema para los maestros, para que ellos se sientan confidentes y con mucha confianza en el empezar.
Great, can I ask the question now Helen?
Okay, so I'm asking you to consider actually, setting aside at least two days at the minimum to train teachers and, you know, staff on how to follow these procedures and protocols, and also to have somebody to, you know, to turn all this information into sort of training material for the teachers, so that they will feel very confident once school starts, that they can just sort of fall into this system and feel really confident about it.
So la pregunta es si nosotros estamos considerando, dale por lo mínimo, los maestros dos días de entrenamiento para que ellos se sienten cómodos en este nuevo proceso y protocolo, y si vamos poder darles materiales para ellos tener ese entrenamiento, para que ellos se sientan con confianza en el empezar.
Thank you Helen. Jeff, I would ask that you and the administrators take that under advisement, so that I think you are preparing, so that everyone will be adequately trained and ready. So I think that was more of a comment for a suggestion is how I took that.
Yeah, yes.
La sugestión es que los administradores tomen esto en cuenta cuando ellos están buscando y planificando para el empezar de escuela.
So, thank you Helen, just to add on to what Brian said, we are approaching this in two different ways. One is in-person discussions and conversations with teachers when they do come back, but there's also going to be videos that are going out to teachers and staff prior to the start of school, reviewing the new procedures and protocols, so that when the teachers come in, they have familiarity with what it is that's new and they're being asked to do.
Hay dos diferentes maneras que nosotros estamos tratando o intentando de soportar los maestros, y eso es cuando ellos vuelven a la escuela en persona, y también estamos mandando videos para que ellos entiendan también cómo va a ser la escuela cuando empezamos, eso para que ellos se sienten cómodos en este nuevo manera que nosotros vamos a empezar y este nuevo protocolo.
Thank you Betty. Scott, is there any additional hand raised?
There's one, one remaining hand, Robert Kettling.
Hey Rob, please unmute yourself, just give us your full name and you have three minutes. I would just ask you to, after two or three sentences, if you could just take a pause. Thank you.
My question is, when will the video of the learning center be up? Because that's going to be a determination for me and my family to make an educated decision about if we should send our son back to school.
La pregunta es cuando vamos a poner el video del nuevo edificio para la escuela, donde van a estar los niños del prekindergarten y el kindergarten, porque eso va a ser significante en la decisión que esa familia toma, en sentido de mandar a sus niños a la escuela.
Do you want to answer the question first and then I'll go to my second one, that way we're... Yes, yes please, yep, we're going to give, turn that over to Jeff.
So we can, we can, I'm not sure what the, the video is that you're referencing. I think what you're talking about is just a video tour of the seven classrooms and the layout of the new facility, am I correct in stating that?
Yes, you are Mr. Nichols.
Okay, so I think it's reasonable that we can get that video up by the end of the day Monday, so that you can have that information prior to submitting your answer to the survey that's due on Tuesday.
Okay. My second question is... Hold on, hold on one second. Sorry, Ms. Reynoso. Sorry Brian, sorry Brian.
Lo, el señor está referenciaando es si el video va a ser de las siete clases del edificio, y también ese video va a estar disponible el lunes, el 24 de agosto, para que usted pudiera informar y tomar su decisión de acuerdo.
Okay. Rob, second half.
My second question is, I'd like to know what the board's feelings are about opening up in person, like personally, as a board member, what all your feelings are.
La segunda pregunta es, le interesa mucho saber la opinión del comité de educación sobre el abrir la escuela.
Okay. Any board members that would like to go first? Okay, well I could tell you that, I put my personal opinion is, I think it's important to open safely for both educational purposes and social purposes for the kids, as somewhat of a return to normalcy. I don't think we'll be returning to pre-COVID normalcy, but I think it's a step in the right direction as long as it's done safely. So I think the administration has done an excellent job at putting the best plans based on the current knowledge we have in place, but allowing for those plans to be fluid, Rob, in terms of if increases in infection go up, that we have an alternate, we're running in parallels here. So I think, I think it is important to open up, I think it is important to get children back into the building, just so long as it's done safely.
El señor dice que él se siente muy cómodo con el plan que está puesto en este momento, entendiendo que ese plan puede cambiar, y nosotros tenemos que tener la manera de ajustar dependiendo si los números cambian en el futuro.
Thank you Betty. Anyone else want to weigh in? You don't have to, it's up to you.
Brian, I'll jump in.
Thank you Chris.
The, this is probably the most complex and challenging situation that most of the people involved in this decision-making will ever face in their role. I've been on the board 11 years and this is, this is as challenging as it gets. We live in a state where the governor actually, at a state level, has dictated a lot of what we can and can't do. So, based on that, it's our job as a administrative team, as staff, as a board, for taking what those requirements are and implementing them in the most thoughtful and healthy and respectful way, and doing it in a way that's based on science, but also recognizing that there's a variety of different opinions in our family, you know, school family, and different approaches that people want to take. So I think that there's a very thoughtful approach to making sure that regardless of how our family feels, there's probably a path that they can pursue in our district that will meet their child's needs. That being said, there's so much that we don't control...
Pause you there Chris?
I'm sorry?
Just a pause to let Ms. Reynoso.
Thank you. La señora reconoce que, la señora reconoce que esto es un tiempo, uno de los tiempos más difíciles y más complicados en sentido de decisiones que uno tiene que tomar. Nosotros tenemos que seguir la guía del gobierno en sentido de él decir lo que podemos y lo que no podemos hacer. También tenemos que reconocer los requisitos que hay que tomar para asegurar que los niños están en un ambiente que está sano, y también respetar de las diferentes maneras y opiniones de cada familia y los sentimientos que ellos pueden sentir para su niño.
Okay Chris, sorry about that, just, go ahead.
I like your cats Eddie. The, the other thing I would add is that we know that no matter what is chosen by the district, it's going to feel good for some families, not good for others, and most will probably be in between that, and that I know that the focus and intention and effort is to do what is scientifically right, healthy, and offer some flexibility for families, so that they can accommodate the needs of their own children. And there is no one right solution or answer in all the minutia of this, so, and, and I know that folks want answers to all of their questions, but some of this is like peeling back an onion, where, you know, you peel back one layer and then there's 10 more questions you've got to work through it. So I know that the district is working as hard as possible to try to put the right plans in place to make sure that the staff and students can be healthy while meeting their educational needs.
Thank you. So nosotros también entendemos que no importa cualquier decisión que la escuela toma, entendemos que esto va a ser bien para algunos, no va a ser bien para otros, pero es importante que nosotros enfocamos en lo que la ciencia indica de lo que está bien. Entendemos que no va a ser 100% bien para todos las familias, pero tenemos que encontrar una solución. Chris, you said minutia, I don't know how to say that in Spanish, sorry. We're going to try, vamos a tratar de dar respuesta a todas las preguntas y entender que esto tiene muchos diferentes niveles y tenemos que ajustar en una manera que sea respetuoso, que los, los familias se sienten bien, los estudiantes se sienten bien y los padres se sienten bien.
Thank you. Chris, I didn't want to cut you off, I knew you were pausing, but will you finish?
I think I've said more than enough.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to check for Ms. Reynoso. Have any of the other members wanted to go next?
I'm going to look up the word minutiae after this in Spanish.
I can go next. I believe that school needs to be open for those parents who believe their kids need to be there, whether it be because they don't think their kids can learn effectively at home, whether it be for economic reasons, because the parents need to work, or whatever their reason is, that they think the kids need to be there. I can stop there Betty, if you want to.
Thank you. Entendemos que algunos se sienten que abrir la escuela es muy importante para algunas familias, entendemos que cada familia tiene diferentes razones por esto, algunos pueden ser por necesidad o necesidad económica, o puede que sea necesidad por los niños no poder aprender en la casa, y entendemos que todos los niños no pueden aprender del mismo nivel.
But I also think it's important that everybody, you know, and I think everybody does, does realize that the more families that do keep their kids at home, the safer the kids at school will be from COVID.
También entendemos que es importante para ellos que deciden mantener o tener sus niños en la casa, también es su ayuda soportar los niños que están en la escuela y mantenerlos de bien salud, de buena salud, que eso sería bueno para todos los estudiantes, y entendemos que es difícil en este tiempo de coronavirus.
So, there are of course negative risks associated with keeping your kids home, and that's why we have to keep schools open for those who choose, but I personally am keeping my kids at home because I have the ability to do so. Want to, I'll go after you translate that.
Sorry, you broke up.
Oh, I was just saying, so I'm personally, even though I believe that schools... Oh, I was just saying, so I'm personally, even though I believe that schools need to be open for those who want their kids to be there, I'm personally making the decision to keep them at home because of the reasons that the conditions that existed in March when we closed, they're like...
Okay, so entiende que existe la necesidad de mantener la escuela abierta, que hay discos que son negativos para algunos niños. Entendemos que es importante y necesario mantener las puertas abiertas. La señora decide que ella, porque puede, va a mantener sus niños en la casa.
And I think every family needs those risks, plus and minus, into consideration very seriously. On my personal end, since, you know, the question was asked, I weigh the fact that I work from home, so I have the luxury of being able to continue my employment while having my kids home. Understanding, though, that I also have a higher risk for my household because my husband has to work out of the home every day at the hospital. And I also have elderly relatives nearby that I'm trying to keep as safe as possible. Every family's risk profile is different and everyone needs to make those decisions.
Entiende que cada familia tiene que reconocer y entender que hay ciertos discos con las decisiones que toman y tienen que tomar eso muy en serio. Ella ha tomado la decisión solamente porque la pregunta estaba hecha de mantener sus niños en la casa porque es una decisión que ella puede tener para ella poder trabajar en su casa y eso existe, que ella puede trabajar en su casa. También su esposo, existe el disco con el, el disco con el trabajar en el hospital y ella necesita, la necesidad de también cuidar esos que son de mayor edad.
Finally, I'm just really excited about seeing what's in store for the remote learning program because I think I have, I have some high hopes for it. I don't want to create too high expectations, but I think it's going to be greatly improved from what we experienced in the spring was already a steeping another level.
También se siente muy bien y feliz de manera de, se siente muy, en sentido muy positivo con la forma remoto que va a salir ahora para septiembre y tiene las expectaciones muy altas y piensa que eso va a ser bueno para todos.
Anybody else like to go next? We don't have to, okay. Mr. Reynoso, if we could, oh, I'm sorry, Scott, there's one more hand up. So if you could...
There is.
Unmute that person, please, and then we'll go to the chat room.
Sure. It is Yadira Luna, and then there is another hand up again.
If you can unmute yourself, we can hear you.
Yadira, it looks like you're muted.
Yadira, no sé si habla español, pero su micrófono está apagado, tiene que prendelo.
That's, okay, I'm sorry, that was a mistake. I just listened in.
Okay.
Gracias.
One more hand, Scott?
Yes, it's Robert Getling. I believe he's requesting to speak again.
That's fine, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't finished asking questions.
Sure.
So thank you very much, those who spoke. That was very important. The next thing, I just wanted to make two statements. First is, you guys are doing an amazing job and I really appreciate your time. Professional sports are struggling right now and they're testing the staff and the players that come in every day and you guys aren't able to do that whatsoever. The other bag of worms I think that you're going to run into if you make it to Thanksgiving is all the college kids coming back to the households where the children are and then you're going to have reinfections or infections in general. Those are just my two statements right there and I will leave it be. And I really appreciate your time and I appreciate the people who really spoke and said something. Thank you very much.
Hay dos partes que el señor quiere reconocer y eso es que todos están haciendo un muy buen trabajo. Quiere reconocer dos puntos y el primero es que hasta en sentido de los coltes, ellos están pasando un tiempo muy difícil y también quiere tomar en cuenta cuando los niños que están en la universidad vuelvan, existe la posibilidad que los números vayan a crecer de nuevo.
Thank you, Rob. I realize I cut off Sandy and Sue who were muted. I didn't, I jumped right over that, so I apologize to both of you. So if either of you would like to say anything, you can now, so my apologies.
I just want to say, I'd give a huge shout out to the administration team, to the custodians, to the secretaries, to all the people that are in that building every day trying to find ways to make this work. They're the unsung heroes here, to the task force for their nights in putting everything together, to Scott for doing all our Zoom meetings. So, I mean, the community really came together. I feel like we listened, we did the best we could, but you guys really did an outstanding job and I just want to say thank you very much.
La señora quiere reconocer el buen trabajo de todos los administradores, el, lo custodial, las secretarias, qué buen trabajo están haciendo y también reconocer al señor Fisher por su asistencia, asistencia con tecnología.
It's said before, it has been said before that this is definitely a challenge and I would just like to, as Sandy said, you know, thank the people who have done all the, all the options, everything, the task force. And I would like to say that, you know, I empower the administrators to, you know, roll with the, you know, the changes and what's going to come up and the challenges along the way when we do open. And I think that they are the people that I would want to have in place to lead the way. Thanks.
La señora quiere reconocer también que es un tiempo muy difícil y darle las gracias a toda la gente que ha estado ayudando con eso. Por ejemplo, el comité que ayudó a hacer el cuestionario y también los grupos que han agonizado para hacer esto posible, reconociendo las dificultades que están teniendo.
Thank you, Betty.
Betty, I was going to ask, sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
Do you want to go back to the chat room?
I do. I was going to ask Ms. Reynoso to go to the bottom of the chat room there. If there's a message that you, if you could translate, Ms. Reynoso, and then we can answer.
Let's see.
There was some, one or two that we missed. So Betty, if you go to 7:47 PM, Danielle...
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I think, I think what she's asking is if they want to start the year in one selection or one option, can they switch later on? But I'll let you read that and see if you read it the same way.
Una de la preguntas que está escrito es si una familia o padres deciden una opción, si existe la posibilidad de cambiar a un, un mes o más después. O si tienen que esperar hasta el fin del año escolar. Okay, thank you.
So did you answer that question, Betty?
I didn't. I can do that now. So, and I know the answer is they can choose to change at any time.
So la respuesta es que la familia puede decidir cambiar de idea a cualquier momento. Eso está abierto a todos.
And then the, the next question, Betty, is from Lourdes Perez at 7:56 PM.
Las, los estudiantes, this one's in Spanish. Give me one second. The question is, will middle and high school students remain in the same class? And the teachers, and will the teachers go to the classrooms?
So the, the, the most accurate...
Or will the students move from classroom to classroom?
So at the middle school level, it will be more of the students remaining for the most part in the classes and the teachers being more mobile. Not all the time, but most of the time. And at the high school level, it's the opposite where the students will have to move more frequently than at the middle school.
La respuesta es que la escuela intermedia, los niños más, la mayoría de los niños van a mantenerse en la clase y los maestros se van a mover para los niños más adultos en el high school. Ellos sí se moverán un poquito más de la escuela intermedia.
And then it looks like the next question is, there's, there's a complimentary comment that was directed by Chris Teis. And then there's a question from Annabelle Roussel at 8:11 PM who asks, for middle schoolers, if they opt to do remote learning, will they do remote learning in the cohort they were originally signed to? Or will they do it with the other students who are doing remote learning?
La pregunta es si los estudiantes en la escuela intermedia tuvieran siendo la clase remoto, si ellos van a hacer la clase remoto con el mismo grupo original o si ellos tendrán otro grupo haciendo, otro grupo de estudiantes haciendo esta clase remoto.
So, Ms. Cariero, do you want to talk about synchronous live instruction?
Yes, so you, whatever cohort that you're put in, you will stay with that cohort. So if you were assigned that cohort, however, and opt to do remote instruction, the webcams that Mr. Nichols discussed earlier will have the live stream of the class that's actually in person. So you will still be with your cohort, but just learning remotely.
La respuesta es que si usted tendrá, usted estará con su grupo, el mismo grupo que usted empezó cuando usted estará haciendo lo académico, la academia o la instrucción en remoto, eso sería por cámara y sí sería con el mismo grupo.
Thank you, Betty. Are there any more hands raised, Scott?
See any hands raised or questions, so?
No.
I would just ask, are there any other board questions?
There's one more question in the chat from Annabelle.
I think that's answered, no?
Well, it's, will students who are learning remotely be able to participate or just listen? So if you're, it's a good question, Annabelle, if you are studying...
Hold up one second, Jeff, just let Betty translate that, please.
La segunda parte de esa pregunta es si los estudiantes están recibiendo lo académico remoto, si ellos van a poder participar en vivo.
So the answer to your question is, if you're studying remotely, you will be able to ask questions of the teachers and periodically throughout the class, the teachers will address those questions. The level of participation will be a little bit less than what it would be if you were in the class, but you will still be able to participate.
La respuesta es sí, usted va a poder hacer preguntas en la clase durante el tiempo entero que la clase existe, pero sí pudiera ser participación un poquito más limitado.
There's an additional question from Dolores Janza. My son last year was in pre-K, he receives speech therapy and he enters kindergarten. This year, will he continue to receive therapy at home through remote or at school?
Okay, la pregunta es, la señora tiene su hijo en el prekindle, el otro año recibió asistencia con lenguaje. Este año él está entrando en el clase de kindle, si él pudiera recibir esa terapia todavía en la casa o por forma, de forma remoto.
Dr. Mears, would you like to address that?
Yes, sure. Can you repeat that question for me, please?
Yeah, my son last year was in pre-K, he receives speech therapy and he enters kindergarten. Will he continue to receive therapy at home through remote or at school?
Yeah, so if the student, yes, hi Dolores, if the student is, is entered and in-person, receiving in-person instruction in kindergarten, so the family chooses in-person, then the speech language therapy would be delivered in-person at the elementary school. If the family chooses remote, then the speech language therapy would be provided remotely.
La respuesta a esa pregunta es si usted decide que su hijo entra a escuela en vivo, si él estará recibiendo ese servicio en vivo también. Si usted decide mantener su hijo en la casa recibiendo estudios remoto, eso sería también para esta terapia, sería remoto también.
Thank you, Betty. Scott, we have one more hand up. If we could turn to that in one hand, please.
We do, it's Yadira Luna.
Please give us your full name.
Okay.
Speak slowly for Ms. Reynoso and we'll take some pauses, please.
Okay. I'm going to do the question in Spanish, so it's better for Ms. Reynoso.
Please, absolutely.
La pregunta es, el survey para los niños que van a ir a la escuela comienza mañana y termina el martes. ¿Hay alguna otra forma que van a enviar esto o solamente va a ser a través de email? O lo van a hacer de otra manera, sobre todo para los padres que tal vez no, no se comunicaron hoy o no saben que tienen solamente este plazo para, para poder escribir a los hijos.
Okay, gracias, una buena...
Thank you.
La pregunta, the question, I was going to, I was going to translate her Spanish to Spanish. So the question is regarding the survey and it going out tomorrow and being needed to be returned by Tuesday, is receiving it by way of email the only option? Because her concern is those who may not receive email or may not be able to get online and access their email.
Scott, do you want to weigh in on that?
Well, if, if email specifically is the issue, we can put the link on the website for people to be able to access it that way.
I think that's a great idea.
If technology in general is the issue where there's no access to any type of internet, then we really don't have an option in place to, to work around that.
Other than perhaps a telephone call.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yadira, voy a decir la respuesta, yeah, I'm going to say the response in Spanish for those that may be listening. La respuesta es si la dificultad sea con el correo electrónico, nosotros sí podemos poner una conexión en la página del distrito, o sea, en la primera página de San Harbor Schools.org. Si tecnología es una problema y no tiene acceso, nosotros podemos tratar de, tal vez tener la opción de una llamada, llamar por teléfono.
And I do think that that would be a great idea, Jeff, if you and Scott could get the link up on the homepage so people can just click through there and include that in the email and in an additional email blast out to the families or notice.
Nosotros vamos a trabajar en hacer eso lo más pronto posible para tener acceso a esa conexión en la página del distrito.
That's a very good question. Thank you for helping us clear that up.
Buena pregunta.
Thanks.
You have another question?
Otra pregunta.
Looks like... Okay, well, that, that appears to be the last, the last person with their hand raised.
So with that, unless there's any other board questions, we would be moving on with our agenda this evening.
Si no hay más preguntas, nosotros vamos a seguir ahora la agenda como normal para esta reunión.
Okay, with that, we are down to no new agenda items, no new business, public input too, which we've just finished up because it was all public input this evening. Is there a motion? A motion to convene into executive session to discuss a contract matter for school employees?
En este momento, excuse me, en este momento no hay nada nuevo para hablar en esta reunión y tampoco no tenemos más en sentido de información para el público o participación.
Vamos, vamos, vamos.
Gracias.
Is there a second? Okay. Victoria, if you could open up the voting, please.
I'm sorry, who seconded? Jordana.
Jordana.
Okay, thank you.
Annabelle and I.
Chris is nine. And just, Mr. Reynoso, if you could help me, just let the, and for the public at large, when we go into executive session, we will be coming out of executive session to close our meeting. No business will be conducted except for the closing of the public meeting at the end of our executive session. The board will not take any action.
Okay, en este momento la reunión va a ser al y el Comité de Educación sigue en una, en otra parte ejecutiva. y el comité de educación sigue en una, en otra parte ejecutiva. Después de eso, no hay ninguna parte para seguir, o sea, la reunión se termina y no va a tomar más decisiones. Así que la reunión se terminó.
And that's encouraging.
Brian?
Yes.
I just want to note that I want to, I want to thank everybody involved for having a bilingual meeting, and I really embrace that, and I would like us to, going forward, think about how we can incorporate all of our communities in these public conversations more regularly. So thank you.
Mr. Nichols is working on that too with the other administrators and Ms. Reynoso about continuing that going forward and figuring out that programming. So that it is being worked on, but yes, and I agree with you, Chris, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I repeat, can I translate that? La señora está dando las gracias por tener esta reunión en español y ella reconoce la importancia de tener reuniones como esta en español también y el plan para tal vez hacer esto en el futuro.
And thank you very much for everything tonight, Ms. Reynoso, and for Mr. Guinan stepping in there briefly when necessary. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, everyone.
And board members, the link for executive session is in your email.
Yeah, thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Goodness, notice.